The seventeenth, if we could please introduce ourselves.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Michael Freeman, Legal Counsel.
Thank you so much, Stephanie Summer Odom is President of the Board. Before we get started, I would like to ask if we could have a silent prayer for the mass shootings that have taken place in New York and also in California. Prayerfully while we're having this meeting, we don't hear about anymore, but if we could just have a few moments of silence, thank you. Amen, thank you so much. We'll move, we'll get busy, get to work, and item number one is Convention District Headquarters Hotel update, Mr. Steve Lieber from Three C D.C. Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate you having me. Well, we've been at it for about, I'd say, three months or so, and we've found some interesting things as we've gone along, but we also feel like we're making some progress here, and we wanted to give you an update and an opportunity to tell you about the whole district, not just about the Convention Center Hotel, but about the Convention Center itself. As you can see on this map, that district is a pretty big one, and we have fortunately found ourselves in a position where, as I've said to you before on several occasions, we sort of have good news and bad news. The bad news is that the district doesn't, isn't a good representation of the city. It's, really has a lot of blighted properties or underutilized properties in the area. That's the bad news. The good news is that the public has got control out of, of a significant amount of that land, and a lot of cities around this country would like to be in a position that we're in, where we have over about seven acres or so, when if you include the two garages behind the Convention Center, it's about seven acres of public control, if you will. We also have the, have the ability to really tie it into Fountain Square with the redevelopment of the Foundry and eighty-four fifty-one and a Fourth and Race, all of which are being leased up, all of which we're going to get a lot of street level excitement and retail and food and beverage and entertainment along those, which is really only a block and a half from the Convention Center, and again, a lot of cities-
Bring your mic up a little bit so they're doing aside.
Wouldn't wish, am I doing better?
Uh huh.
I'm sorry about that. Would wish to be in that position, so that is also good news. But as we go through and do the assessment, the Convention Center itself is very dated. It was redone in two thousand and five or six. There was about a hundred and thirty million dollars put in, and at that time, there was a little bit of an expansion, and there was a renovation that occurred at that time. And then we have the lack of a first-class Convention Center Hotel, all of which puts us in a competitive disadvantage in many of our peer cities. The lodging tax, which is about ten and a half percent, is spread around different places, and we'll talk about that in a bit, but it's historically first obligation from both the city's and the county's portion of that tax goes in to pay the debt service on the existing Convention Center, and then it's, there's a waterfall that occurs, and then there's a separate chunk that goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and a separate chunk that ultimately goes to support the Convention Center operation itself, and we'll go over that in a second as well. And, you know, when you mix it up and spread it around like that, what happens a lot of times is, you know, we don't, we don't have sufficient revenues to kind of do something big here, and I think we can, we can work on that. And we'll have to do that by making sure that we are abiding by state-enabling legislation, which grants us the ability to tax that, and then there's a series of cooperation agreements between all the parties that we should look at to make sure that we are, that that revenue is flowing in an efficient manner. Getting back to the existing Convention Center, there's about fifty million dollars of debt remaining on that Convention Center, and it's to be paid off over about the next ten years. So, in anything that we decide to do, looking at that existing debt and how we can work with the city to restructure it possibly, to allow us to do an additional borrowing. This gives you a sense of the district itself. The red includes all land that's owned by the public. A being the site that we recommend highly, that that would be the site for the new Convention Center Hotel, or at least a portion of it, we don't believe that the whole site needs to be devoted to a Convention Center Hotel. C is this, is that Convention Mall, that's been in sort of, in a state of flux over the years. D is the Millennium Site, obviously, and E is the two parcels, two garage parcels owned by the port. And B is a site that is the Wex Garage, that there's been discussion back and forth, is this something that could stay, and quite frankly, it could. Could it be part of a redevelopment? It may as well, and that's something we should determine at some time in the future here, as to whether or not it should be part of the public domain. And this gives you just a view of some of these individual sites. The red is star there is that, that is a, the Port Authority has an application in, up at the state, in the Department of Development, to have demolition proceeds from one of their programs where they allocate money to local governments for demolition. They have that application in, we met with the Director of Development up there and advocated that they approve that application and, and allow us to get moving on getting that building down because it's in a deplorable shape, and is, and not representative of our standard in this city. And then these are the other sites. The Millennium Site, by the way, is down, and that is a big site. You don't realize how big that site is until that site is down. Convention Center Hotel, so, what have we done? The first thing we did was to reemploy the company that does research on hotel markets. We employed them in two thousand and nineteen, as did the Port Authority, and what we want to do is update the study from two thousand and nineteen to give us a sense as how does the, is the hotel market here performing at this time, and then is there a market for a Convention Center Hotel, and if so, how would that Convention Center Hotel perform over time? And that study's been completed, and the good news is that they feel like there is in fact a market here for a Convention Center Hotel. About eight hundred rooms, with a national brand and affiliation. You would need some additional meeting space, about sixty-eight thousand square feet to complement what the existing space is at the Convention Center. There probably would be a junior or senior ballroom to complement, again, the Convention Center, and then you would have multiple food and beverage options as well at the street level. Here's some good news, too. The study included thirty-seven hundred and ninety rooms. That's down from four hundred, four thousand two hundred and twenty-five, which was part of the study in two thousand and nineteen. Reason for the differential is obvious, the Millennium, thank goodness, is no longer in that mix in the portfolio because back in two thousand and nineteen, it was dragging the market down. And we've added some hotels, a couple really nice hotels that opened up on Ray Street, and maybe even by that time, the one down there in Little Park as well. So, we added some units, but then took away the portfolio from the, from the Millennium. In two thousand and nineteen, when we did the study for the forty-two hundred rooms, the average occupancy in the market was seventy-three percent, which is good. The average daily rate, which is about a hundred and sixty-five dollars, and then at that time, the revenue per available room, or RevPAR, as they call it in the industry, was a hundred and twenty-one. That's total revenues generated from that hotel, food and beverage, everything, to the available rooms in the marketplace, and that's how they calculate that. So, we were pretty healthy in two thousand and nineteen, and then you see what happened in twenty and twenty-one. Things didn't go so well, you look at those numbers, and it's like a punch in your gut as to where we were. But even though it, in twenty twenty-one, we only went up to forty-six percent occupancy, that's a pretty significant increase from twenty-eight percent. But what's really interesting is that our spend, both at the average daily rate and at our RevPAR, but the average daily rate in particular rebounded pretty significantly. And the reason why the RevPAR didn't, probably didn't move as quickly as the average daily rate is because a lot of food and beverage operations within hotels were not open during COVID. But we are seeing, again, we're seeing some progress there. The twenty twenty-eight year is the year we're, is determined as the stabilized year. That's assuming that we were able to work all this out and find a hotel developer and design it and build it and get it operating by the third quarter or so of twenty-five. If that's the case, then the stabilized year, that's the sort of, after we get up to a ramp-up period, and it's now on, it's stabilized operations there, suggesting that the market, the market and the entire market is at about seventy-two percent occupancy, average daily rate jumps to two twelve, and revenue per available room is up to one fifty-two. What this says is for those that might be concerned that if we provide for a new Convention Center Hotel, that it won't really cannibalize the market, that the market will still perform in our, in the minds of HVS in a very strong manner. If you then look at the Convention Center Hotel itself, by itself, in twenty twenty-eight, it says that the average occupancy, and that building would be about seventy-six percent. So, it's outperforming the market. That the average daily rate would be about two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and the revenue per available room about a hundred and eighty. So, it, it's projecting well. Now, again, these are projections, but I'd rather have this, and, and there's significant research done by these, by these firms, and these are recognized institutions that hotel developers use to get their financing. So, it projects that in twenty twenty-eight, the stabilized year, that hotel could have a, they projected its performance, that it could have a net operating income of almost twenty-seven point three million dollars, which is a significant number. That assumes that they're paying all their hotel tax and all their property tax, so that there's no sort of support that would come from that, either one of those sources. And that's a significant number. It's, between both of them, it's probably damn near six, six million dollars. That's additional tax revenue that would be generated from that hotel if in fact, none of those taxes were abated in any fashion. So, if you take that number, and what's it cost to build something like this? Well, typically, it could be anywhere from four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars a key, per room. And if it's an eight hundred room, and it's four hundred and fifty thousand a room, it's three hundred and sixty million dollars. It is a big, big cost. And the question is, does the revenue, the twenty-seven million or some version thereof, is it support a cost of three hundred and sixty million? And I would say it's pretty damn close. It is, and I think we're in a good, in a good position to eventually go out to the marketplace and see how we can attract hotel developers. So, we haven't done that yet, we simply have done the study. We're briefing you, and we're briefing City Council next week, and once we sort of get the, this is how we want to proceed, what we would do if we would proceed would be probably a two-step process. First one would be to do a, a more, a request for interest, if you will, from a rather, a larger group pool of developers. And we're going to get that, we're, you know, going to various people to help us develop that list. And then from that, that request of interest, we would then try to narrow it down to four or five firms, of which point in time, we would then ask them for a very specific submission document. And in that submission document, we as a community are going to decide what are things that are important to us. And it, all the things that I think we've talked about before in terms of inclusion and other local businesses, and anything that we feel, and we've got, we've got issues around labor, I mean, we can get on a list of what, where we want to be in this submission document. We would, we would design that document so that each developer would have to submit, and then we could evaluate that submission based on, A, how well they can financially support or develop a hotel, and how well they meet some of our community objectives. And I think that's, the timing of all that would be that I'd like to try to get that out, that list narrowed down and out, and by the third quarter of this year, so the fall of this year, so that, you know, it's not inconceivable that we could have some folks and know what we're thinking about doing by the, by year's end. That we would then, as we're doing this, we would come back consistently with briefings to the elected officials, let you know where, where we are, and, and then come back with some recommendations, and, you know, we'll see how we proceed. I, I am confident that we are going to get interest in this. I'm confident that those that are interested in this will recognize that when they go into cities like this and maybe seeking government support, that there's expectations on parts of those governments to meet some of the community objectives that we all are important to us. I don't think we have to apologize for that, but I do think we need to be prudent about how we do it and how we ask the question, and, and how we get meaningful inclusion and participation, I think, will, will be key. So, before I go to the Convention Center, I thought I'd stop and see if there's questions about the hotel itself.
Thank you, thank you so much. I, I saw this presentation when I was at the C V B, so I'm familiar with it, and I asked a lot of questions then. I was just wondering about the portion on page eight, and it indicated the average occupancy in, from twenty to twenty-one, twenty-eight percent, twenty-eight pers-, yeah, okay, twenty-eight point eight percent, and then in twenty-one, forty-six point three percent, and I was just kind of averaging, it was a seventeen point five percent increase, according to my math.
No, that's more than that, Madam Chair, that would be a fifty percent increase. Yep, that'd be a fifty percent increase. Twenty-eight, forty-six is forty-eight, that's fourteen, that's fourteen points difference, and fourteen is half of twenty-eight. It's seventeen percent difference, but a fifty percent increase.
Well, that's what I'm saying, a seventeen percent difference.
Yeah, but, but we're actually jumped fifty percent.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to confuse you.
Oh, no, that's okay, get me, get me together, but I knew it was a seventeen point five increase because I added that up, but a fifty percent difference. So, my question is, the bottom line is, the stabilized year of operation, why did they choose, and I know it was a thorough study, to say that it would take till twenty twenty-eight to make that happen, that it would be stabilized at that point?
Because-
The increase is going so quickly.
Yeah, but that's, that's when the hotel is up and operating. That's the year that that is the, so what, we made some assumptions that we wouldn't be able to get that, even if we worked as quickly as we did, that we would not be able to get a hotel up and operating until the third quarter of twenty-five. And then, what's typically in the industry, it's a, it's about a two-year, two-and-a-half year ramp-up period. Which we're saying, if, after those two years, that hotel has now established itself in twenty twenty-eight. And so, when that hotel established, then we wanted to look at, well, what's the rest of the market doing in twenty twenty-eight if it's now? Because what you're, what you're always concerned about is, if you have a new shiny toy that's nice and big, is it going to take away from the rest of the market? And what that's saying is, no.
Okay.
No. That's why it's, the twenty twenty-eight was picked.
Okay, okay. I knew there was a reason.
Yeah. And it's an assumption.
But I didn't understand why.
It is an assumption. But we need to, you know, we need to keep pushing to try to meet that date.
Okay, okay.
And we'll see how successful we are.
Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you, and certainly have a lot of questions. Coming from, as I've had a chance to work a lot in this industry, I've been the Deputy Director of Tourism for the State of Ohio, and actually wrote the tourism funding model for the whole state. Also been around when we created the C F A, that we had to get the, the current Convention Center, but also Sharonville Convention Center. And so, a lot of, and I know we'll talk about this a little bit later, but a lot of those agreements that you're talking about were agreements that had to be made and need to be kept, because that's the only way that we were able to move forward. We also increased our hotel tax. We became one of the largest hotel tax in the whole state of Ohio, and we had to get the general managers and hotels to agree to that, with the assumption that the current Convention Center expansion, as well as Sharonville, will bring more business to their hotels. So, I think the backstory, and we haven't paid off these debts yet, are critical, so very interested, and we'll have more questions about your funding model in a second, and wanted to, I guess, move forward on the hotel. For me, the hotel is the number one thing, and I think it should be separated from the Convention District because it was the hotel that everyone said we got to have for the World Cup. It's got to be up, ready to go, it can't be, we hope, we think, the only reason we were moving that quickly with limited information was because they said we had to hurry up for the World Cup. So, I guess my question to you, you said if everything goes right, and we know, and you've been in development a long time, and I've come out of development in terms of my family, as well as tourism, we know that everything does not go right. Are you saying we will be able to guarantee that a Convention Hotel is up prior, or, well, has to be prior than the World Cup because we're losing conventions, not because of Convention Center, which is what you're getting ready to talk about? Because I've actually recruited Conventions that want to come, but we don't have, and they want to come back, and they're okay with the existing Convention Center, if we didn't put another dime in it, they're ready to go, but they cannot stay in five or six different hotels because we don't have a, a Convention Hotel that can hold all of them. So, I guess my understanding, I want to get a clear understanding, are you saying the Convention Hotel will guarantee, under your thing, we'll be able to get it up, or we're not guaranteed to be able to get this up?
I can't guarantee anything. If I can, I don't control everything, I don't, I can tell you that we have a track record of getting things done, and we do, do so in a timely fashion, and we are going to work very hard on this, but I, for me to sit here and tell you I can guarantee something, I would be, that would be intellectually dishonest on my part. I will tell you that I will work our tails off.
No, no, I, I got that part. What I'm saying is, the only reason that we're here right now and not, you know, we would still be going back and forth, was because we were told that we would be able to get this, we got to get moving on the, on the Convention Hotel. And I'm just asking you, what is that timeline?
The timeline is, as I indicated, it would be, ideally, we would be able to identify a hotel developer by year's end, working with a developer, get ourselves in a place to get into a, a development agreement, which includes everything from all of the issues that we all think are important, including a room block commitment, which we need for our Convention Visitors Bureau, and, and that we would start construction next year. Hopefully, in the first half of next year.
Got you. So, the, yeah, so the thing I just want to say for the Administrator, I think for me, I want to know what's the timeline on the Convention Hotel?
That's what I just said.
No, I'm saying, I don't, I haven't seen your contract, we're waiting on the contract, but I'd like to see that as the number one priority for, because I know you're getting ready to get into the Convention Center, but I just want to make sure that that is our top priority, because that's the only reason that we rushed through something, and we are losing conventions that can go in the Convention Center right now, because we don't have it. The other thing I want to ask the Administrator, I'd like to know, I know we took down a Millennium Hotel, but I would like to know, how much in property taxes are we missing in that? If you could provide that to our board in writing, doesn't have to be today, but in writing, because I think Mr. Lieber did have a good point about the property tax revenue. We make our money on property taxes, we make our money on sales tax, and we make our money on, on taxes as it relates to hotel taxes. So, I would like to know that. The other question that I did have for you, there's a chart that you had here, you said public control on the slide number one?
This is the one that probably shows it better.
Okay, because it was saying, now, when you, when you identify as public control, because we got people that watch, we're not saying that the city nor the county controls these properties, these properties are outside-
Port Authority.
Port Authority, outside group that we don't have necessarily a vote on.
Well, they're a public agency, I mean-
Yeah, got you. I just wanted to clarify for people watching, when they think public, they think the people they elected, not people that they don't necessarily know. And you're saying the majority of this property on your, can you go back to the front one? Because it shows it better.
I don't think it does, but-
That one, right there. So, are those all the properties that are controlled by Port Authority, or?
No, the white's just the district.
Okay.
The white, there's property, that, that, then when you zoom into that white, it zooms into this map.
Got you, okay. And what's the red and the blue? What is that? That's just communities?
Yellow is projects that are completed, so that's the Macy's, that's Macy's, and the Foundry is the old Macy's. Fourth and Race is completed, that's a residential and commercial property, that's two hundred and seventy units. And then eighty-four fifty-one is completed, that's retail, all of them have retail on the first floor, restaurants and entertainment going into them as we speak. And then red is all the Port Authority-owned properties, and blue is a property that is owned privately by somebody else that we, that Port Authority or any other governmental agency, or Three C D.C., none of us own.
Okay.
I just wanted to point that out, it's sort of right in the middle of the pie there.
Got you, okay, and the yellow's completed. Reason I ask that, we've really been pushing, at least I know I have, for African-American ownership, and not just this project, but I'm just looking at all the projects we kind of just, you know, give away to these other entities, whether it be a Port Authority, if you would will. And I had read something where one of the properties, because the Port Authority owned it, it was in the Business Courier, maybe you can clarify if it wasn't correct, but it was saying, and it had the Port Authority actually quoted in it, saying that because they own the property, it could be, it could not be a joint venture or any African-American ownership of the property. Did that come up in any of your consulting findings?
No. No, I, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know, in the context, what that would mean. I mean, nothing would preclude us on A, which is owned by the Port Authority, nothing would, which is the site we are recommending to the Convention Center Hotel. There's nothing that would preclude us from having a developer with a, could be an African-American owned developer, it could be a, it could be a majority developer with a minority equity interest in the property, nothing would preclude us from doing that. Absolutely nothing.
Okay, good. And Mr. Administrator, I'd like to get something in writing on that, because it was in the Port Authority, and they mentioned that, and I just, people were concerned about it.
Okay, we can get you something back on that, as well as the property tax implications on the Millennium as well.
Okay, that'd be great. The other thing I wanted to highlight, you mentioned the garages, and on those garages, many of them are, are they privately owned, or are these your garages?
E is owned by the Port Authority.
Okay.
B is owned privately. So, those two red ones in the back, which are, many people see as the Convention Center garages, are owned by the Port Authority.
Okay. And then I'd just like to see, when you put your performing together and financial deck, I'd like to see if, since they're supposed to be partners and they're going to be public, is, do we get anything from that? Can we get fifteen percent or twenty percent into the project? There's just a lot of garages being developed, I don't know if we get anything from it, but is it something that could be put back into the project?
Well, they, they borrowed money to buy those garages, and I, particularly over COVID, I can just tell you that they've, they borrowed, and they have been struggling to meet their obligation on those. So, I'm not so sure that there's a lot of, and those garages are going to need an infusion of capital. They're, they're not, if that's, if we eventually do something with that Convention Center, that is not a very good approach to the Convention Center, in that when you get introduced to the Convention Center through the parking garage, because you enter the garage, you can enter the Convention Center from, from, from those garages. We need to think through how we support our colleagues at the Port Authority, get that, get those renovated.
Yeah, I guess what I'm looking at from our perspective, I'm looking on behalf of, everybody has, you have a board, and-
Sure do.
We are accountable to the people, which is kind of like our board, and my goal is, how do we bring in more outside money, less on the local people? And then how do we create a revenue stream to try to pay for some of these things, not on just their backs? The other thing you brought up is hotel costs, and I think this would be helpful, I don't know if your consultant had this in there, but I wanted to look at these hotel rates. For example, the Cincinnati Music Festival, which is coming back, which is a large moneymaker for our county, but when you look at the amount of money it goes in, and the people that come, majority of people are African-American, who are the consumers, who have to book the hotels and pay for the food and go to the event, but then we look at our C F A, all of our projects that we go into, they don't go back into the people, the consumers that put those dollars in. I was concerned about the rate, hotel rates, for example. I was concerned about the rate, hotel rates, for example. That weekend, we stopped it some years ago, and I'm hoping it doesn't fester its ugly head again, but we saw some price gouging going on with hotels. So I want to know, are there any other weekends that's charged $379 a night? Or is that the highest weekend that we charge? You probably won't know that, the administrator will, because when we start looking at your hotel rates and the nights, I think that's an important part to look at.
I mean, they're probably the only other place, times when you have those peak nights, at least in the last year, was probably the championship, or some of the playoff games for the Bengals, was probably the last time you saw sort of that peak. And it'll probably happen again at blank this year.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to, I just like to look at those.
I mean, those big events is what happens, is what.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. What we saw in our research was even though on those big nights, when it came to African-American music festival, it was even larger than those big, big games that we had. And we want to make sure that that is not happening. And if it is happening, then there, we need to look at, those are the majority that are putting into the CFA dollars, and nothing is going back. So we talk about inclusion and equity, we have an economic argument to it because that's the weekend, or that's the group is putting in the majority of the money to that, to that fund. So those are the questions that, oh, I did have one. You mentioned that this study, you had to rehire the person. Is this the old study or is this a new?
It's a new one. I just, we just finished it. We just finished that study.
Okay, because we had one that was given to us, but this is not the 2019?
No.
Okay.
This is the updated study from 2019.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lieber, for being here and going through this with us. I remember standing with you four or five years ago on the South Side, talking about how the hotel could potentially go to the South. And then we got into a conversation related to the Millennium and had an opportunity to purchase that. We did it. Then COVID hit and delayed everything. So from my vantage point, we've been talking about this for about five years, and I'm very glad that we are finally almost ready to launch related to putting in what we all three know is the most important piece of this puzzle, which is the Headquarters Hotel, because it drives everything else and allows the expansion of the Convention Center, or even a redo of the Convention Center. So I'm, I'm very glad you're here, and I'm glad you're going to City Hall next to bring us all up to speed. So I, I wonder, and it occurs to me too, and I was a little curious about both of the different studies as well. It sounds, it sounds to me like they have come to the same conclusions, that this is the number one thing, the room night, or the rooms, probably 600 to 800 is probably the sweet spot. We need some ballroom in there, we need some office space in there. But when you talk about all those add-ons beyond just the rooms, but some of the ballrooms and meeting space, and you've said, in the very beginning, I think I heard you said that the entire property might not be necessary for what you have described as the Headquarters Hotel. Can you help us understand what kind of property, how many acres or partial acres might be not used for this? And what would be a potential vision for some of that property?
So, again, these could change. So I'll just speak to sort of where I am today in this thought process. But, you know, if, if you say to a hotel developer, a parcel A is available, they tend to take more than they need. And we want to make sure that that's not, in fact, the case. And that, that, that site's about, oh, it's a little over 70,000 square feet, which means it's a little, not quite two acres. Two acres would be 84,000 square feet, so it's 14,000 square feet less or something than two acres. We figured that it could, that, that the hotel, new hotel could be developed to the north part of that site, in other words, closest to the Convention Center. I'm sure they want to be connected to the Convention Center. And, and that the back parcel that would face on Fourth Street, there's opportunities for a lot of different things. Another mixed-use development like Fourth and Race, I think would be great, where we have retail and, and entertainment, food and beverage on the, on the first floor, I think would be a great idea. Similarly, on parcel C, it could be a, another possible hospitality or mixed-use development. I would assume that we would not want to be pursuing a hospitality venue there until we get the Convention Center up and operating, so that they know that we're not in any way cannibalizing them. And then we believe D, which is where the Millennium is, is that, that that needs to be, we need an interim use of that site. And, and we'll get to this in a second with the Convention Center, but we are asking the design firms to look at the Convention Center and an interim use of that site that could be public civic space or something along that line, that could be programmed over time, both by the community and by the Convention Center itself. When we have public shows there, you know, the car show, the home and garden show, we could do some indoor/outdoor programming there. So I think there's all kinds of opportunities here, and I don't think we need one developer. It can be multiple developers, and I think would be the best, to be honest with you. And they could all be doing different things that hopefully complement one another, and our job would be to help make sure that we orchestrate that, that complimentary effort.
Great. And just one, one other quick question, because I really do want to get to the Convention Center piece of it. But do you think there would be, when you say the Convention Center and the Headquarters Hotel would be connected, is that literally connected? Is that like a skywalk?
Yeah, it would probably be, it's funny, we'll get to this at the Convention Center. That building is plagued with bad connections. I mean, it is plagued with bad connections. When you walk into that front door, for instance, you walk in and you, as immediately you come in there, you're sort of under a set of escalators that go up. And the sole purpose for those escalators was so that there was a touchdown from the Millennium, from the, from the former Millennium. So there's a whole set of escalators and a, and a mezzanine level there that's really pretty useless right now. It doesn't really go to anywhere. I personally am not a fan of skywalks, obviously. We've done our share of elimination of those over time, but I think this might be something that a Convention Center, we, we need to be prepared that a Convention Center hotel developer would, would want that. And we should design that Convention Center redo, if we in fact do it, that would accept it in a, in a decent way, at least an open skywalk, so it's not a blank wall.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. And, and the board has made it very clear that the Headquarters Hotel is our number one priority, so I'm just going to reiterate that again, so.
Okay, okay.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the Convention Center? So I will tell you that as, I, again, I've been a little bit in this profession for a while. I've, before I came here, in my previous life, I ran the Sports and Exhibition Authority in Pittsburgh that built the two convention centers, excuse me, two stadiums and the Convention Center. We did it all at the same time. So I have some experience with convention centers, and not only the, the construction of one, but the operation of one. And I can tell you that this one ranks pretty, pretty low down in terms of our competition. I mean, virtually, if you look at any peer city that we have, this one is, has more challenges. It doesn't really have a front entrance to it, and then it has a series of blank walls along either side. That's on the, to the north facade. And it has a lot of sort of attachments to it that aren't very functional and actually make it a little bit of an operational difficulty for our operators at Spectra to maintaining it, keeping it clean. They made an attempt, when they came across Fifth Street from a vehicular standpoint, to sort of jazz it up a little bit from the west. But if you look at it from the balance of the space, it really is pretty pedestrian at best. It's one of those kind of things where they don't know where to put anything else, so they took the old Albe arches and stuck it on the building. And it sort of speaks for itself. And this entrance is, is the, is really the biggest challenge here. It doesn't ask, it doesn't invite you in, and it really does need to be changed. And then this is the site, obviously, to the east. If you take this site, which is a good, I think, a good depiction of it, if, north being that way, that is where the exhibit hall would go, and that's where the exhibit hall would extend. So about halfway down that building site is how far from the north to south that exhibit hall comes. And that's what would come across, which would cost, would come across Elmo to the Millennium Site at some point in time when the community decides that they want to expand that Convention Center. These are some of our competitors, Indianapolis, Nashville. There's a series of outdoor spaces, Louisville, it's not, you can't see it very well. And there is the Pittsburgh Convention Center, which is bigger than this, than our Convention Center, and sort of, obviously, it was built in 2003, so it's, but it looks much more up to date than ours. So what would we like to do about it? We have asked and have gotten a proposal and have begun work with a group, Moody Nolan. For those that don't know Moody Nolan, it is, at least in the state, is the largest, probably one of the largest in the region. It's an African-American-owned firm. Kurt Moody started this business about 40 years ago. His son Jonathan now runs it. And we approached them, we went up to visit them, asked them about whether or not they had interest in this. Moody Nolan has teamed up with TVS out of Atlanta. And they redid the, and built and designed the new Music City Center in Nashville. They abandoned the old Convention Center and built a new one. And then Jacob Javits Center in New York, they not only expanded it, but they renovated it. So that team together has quite a portfolio. And we asked them to give us a proposal, to give us a program of options and costs associated with those options to renovate and then contemplate an interim use of the Millennium Site. And so they are doing that and working on that. Moody Nolan is the lead firm, and TVS works under them. I am not going to kid you, it's not going to be cheap. I imagine it's going to be every bit of $100 million or north of that. And so where do you fund that from? And there's obviously a couple of different options here. One is that we more efficiently use our existing lodging tax, and we'll get to that in a second. We could enhance revenues from a new lodging tax, but we are, as the commissioner said, we are pretty high in comparative, in comparison to some of our other jurisdictions, so that's a challenge. There are some state tax grants. There's what's called a transformational and mixed-use development program that you can, that 10% of your cost, you can have a third party come in and invest in and, and provide infused capital in to support that project. It's not unlike how we use historic tax credits. We used it on Music Hall, a similar concept. We met with this director of development about this, and whether or not we could qualify the Convention Center by itself. And that's probably a stretch. We could probably legally structure it, that we could have done it. It's just that you couldn't really, you could not designate it as a mixed-use development. It's essentially an assembly hall. It's nothing more than an assembly hall. You can, we can stick a little restaurant in there, try to, but that didn't happen. However, we could do it where we combine the Convention Center and the hotel, where together they both benefit from a, from a grant. Now, one may go faster than the other, or vice versa. We can figure all that out than how we can try to qualify. But it's our intention to continue to pursue that program and to try to get that program so we can get an infusion of capital from the state that would support any efforts we would have here locally. So we will continue to pursue it. They know we have interest in it. We did a subsequent meeting with them on it, and they want to be helpful. Obviously, that's where that, the hospital, the whole visitor program and Convention and Visitor Bureau program is housed under development, and we want to continue to be close to them. And we have a very strong working relationship with them, and hopefully it'll, it'll continue. So we're already trying to think through this. And then we talked a little bit about the local tax, and this is just so everybody can recall how this money flows. It is a total of 10 and 1/2%. Three of, 3% of it comes off, and through that co-op agreement, 3% goes right to the Convention Visitors Bureau. And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe this is a, a good way to look at this. For every 1%, this is pre-COVID. Let's assume it's pre-COVID numbers, when we were doing, when things were normal, and we're getting back to that number. But pre-COVID, that for every 1%, it's like 3 million bucks. That's what it generated, a little less than, but about $3 million. So if, for every 3%, for instance, that was about $9 million generated. The county generated a little bit more, but their first obligation and their first line of defense was to team up with the city to pay the debt service on the 5 million. And then once that tank was filled, then the money flows down, and this is when the support for Sharonville came in. This is when the support to buy the Millennium came in. And then there's a series of other miscellaneous expenses that you pay to support all kinds of things that, that pertain to hospitality and convention and convention business, visitor, visitor activities. The city's lodging tax is 2 and 1/2%. It too, first line of defense, goes to team up with the county to pay the 5 million, and then money flows after that, and they use a chunk of their waterfall to pay for the infrastructure around FC Cincinnati. And then finally, another city lodging tax, 1 and 1/2%. And that money goes directly to support the operations of the Convention Center and any capital improvements or operating deficits it may have. So that's, that's how that money's flowed. Now, in any given year, there may be monies that could be identified or peeled off on that to dedicate to a, to a new, but that, again, is a decision that the city is going to have to make and you, as county commissioners, would have to make. But we would look at state law and all these cooperation agreements to make sure that anything that we do, any future borrowings we would do, or any financing support we provide to the hotel, does not do anything to have a negative impact on the existing debt structures that we have. So we have a series of existing debt structures, and those bondholders have, have certain rights, and we need to be cognizant of those rights and respectful of those rights. That's really it. Let me just tell you where the design team is. They spent last week interviewing a lot of people, people that use the facility. We asked that the Visitors Bureau and Spectra give a list of people who they would recommend, whether it's meeting planners or other folks, why, how they use the building. Some of them, they also gave us people that actually run public shows there, and they spent two days interviewing folks. And if there are other folks who you think we should talk to, we will have the, we would have the convention, or the architects content them directly and speak to them, because we want to get a, a pretty good, broad sentiment about what they think is, what they think is important about that building. It has, you know, the exhibit hall is less than 100, it's about 195,000 square feet. It's, but that's usable, it's significantly less than that. It's about, according to, they say the gross versus the net, it's probably close to 140,000 square feet. And then some of it is, is a lower bay, so if you went in there, it's sort of, you feel a little claustrophobic from a, from a trade show standpoint. I agree with you. I think some people, it's irrelevant, that facility, they'll go back to that facility, whether it's to the ballroom, which is probably the best part of that building. But there are others that wouldn't. And they are interviewing folks that did not come back as well, and why they didn't come back. I think it's a combination of both things. I, you know, we've gone through this in many cities, and we went through this in Pittsburgh, which comes first, the chicken or the egg. I firmly believe that they both feed off each other. The hotel will do better with the Convention Center upgraded, and the Convention Center will certainly do better with the Convention Center Hotel. And I don't think, you know, I don't think one is important, or we should not think that we need to continue to work hard to do them both. Obviously, not one at the expense of the other, or nor that we want to hold something back or not work on something because we're working on something else. They're both important, and we need to both get them done if we can, if it's financially feasible and it makes sense to the elected officials that have to make those decisions. So with that, I will stop on the Convention Center. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you so much for the presentation on that area. I'm not going to ask any questions, I asked them before. But one thing that I did want to mention on page 22, as we talk about renovation costs will exceed 100 million, just to let the board know, that's renovation cost does not include expansion.
Correct.
So that's just to renovate the place, and, yeah, so I just wanted to make that clear.
The only thing that we are looking at as well, from that standpoint, is what we would do with the Millennium in an interim use, that, the site, not doing improvements or not building a building on it, but what public space, could we have an interim use there? we have an interim use there?
Right, thank you. Vice President Reese.
Thank, thank you for the presentation. And like I said, a lot of my questions are general questions, not necessarily to you or 3CDC, but to the whole concept, being that I've been at the city when we expanded the convention center and had three times we couldn't get it going and what, where we had to bring the people to the table. We had a much bigger, robust plan, but we had to bring the state, we had to bring the city, we had to bring the county in, we had to, we had to put a CFA up together to finance it and we finally got a deal. And then being at the state level, being in tourism, where there's lots of other obligations around the state, tourist attractions. And so I know it was, it is very tough to get the state to come onboard when we have a number of projects, both in Cincinnati and in Hamilton County and around. And then now be at the county, I just don't want to do a merry-go-round. We just tore down, if you say just, not too long ago, we were getting rid of skywalks, like you said, because we was, oh, skywalks, that's the past. And there used to be a skywalk that took you from the Millennium Hotel site over to the Convention Center. We said that was a horrible thing and they came in and tore all that down. And then there was one that went the opposite across the street to, I guess, the downtown mall that's going to.
They're all, they were all, they're all still there. They're all still there. There's one, there's one from the, the parking garages.
Yeah, and then we had the skywalks. I don't want to go back to skywalks because we had skywalk downtown when I was growing up, everybody was on the skywalk and they said, that's the past. So I don't want to be in a merry-go-round of just throwing public money around with very, various trends. What I do want to highlight, a couple of things, and some of these are for the administrator, some are for you. You got a chance to have a consultant, you said, bring back, I'd like to be able to read that if we got to make decisions about what we're going to move forward with, some of the updated findings, because the ones we had, I think, were outdated. But also, I'd like to get more information about, there are a lot of hotels that are popping up. And to really get an understanding of, a holistic look of all hotels. I understand that FC is building a hotel near, over the Rhine, a little bit closer. There are some other hotels that are up and I just want to see how does that, that weren't up before, how does that impact as we're moving it, looking at a $360 million hotel? So I didn't get to ask that question. The second question.
That was taken, that's taken into consideration in this study. Every new hotel that's been built to date. And, and, and they also looked at anticipatory ones that have been sort of talked about. So when they did that projection of 2028.
Yeah.
They, all those new hotels that have been built in the last couple of years, they were all included in that market study.
Got you. Okay, that's good. So if we could get a copy of the study, I like, I love to read and this is my, I love to read, especially on this industry. The other thing that I wanted to ask about, on the Convention Center side, and it's not just Convention Center, I'm just going to be honest with you. We have spent a lot of taxpayer money on facilities. We own two stadiums, Paul Brown Stadium, that we're looking at what we got to do with that, that, they handed us 200 pages, the taxpayers' money. We've got the Red Stadium, Great American Ballpark, and we just, last week, voted on painting. We got to put some new paint and some new things up there, taxpayer money. And so we have very limited taxpayer money and the taxpayers are saying, hold on, we can't keep funding all this. So to come in and say we need a new Convention Center, I'm just going to put it out there, it's going to be very tough. What I've asked for though, it doesn't mean that we don't need new things moving forward, but what I've asked for, administrator, for your team to get back with us, how do we, I need a study and a funding on, how do we make money on what we already have? And I just think that the Duke Energy Center, possibly, there are some people who want more, bigger, and we might not be able to get those right now. But what can we get right now out of the funding that we have? Because when you look at this Convention Center Facilities Authority, a lot of the debt is on the county. And then if you in Cincinnati, you're in the city and the county. What I, what do I mean by that? Sharonville Convention Center debt service comes out of our portion.
Right.
Duke Energy Convention Center half comes out of our portion. Millennium Hotel comes out of our portion. So even if we go and do green space at Millennium Hotel, we're not getting green backs. We were getting, we were getting property tax off of it. We won't get property tax off of it. We were getting CFA tax off of it. We're not going to get CFA hotel tax off of it. So whatever we put there, I want it to be funding, some kind of money source to help us with the Millennium debt service that's on us. The city has no Millennium debt service. Then we have some other hospitality activities that we have to pick up. The city put all of their, most of, all of their stuff in FC Cincinnati infrastructure and the Duke Energy Center. That's where their money went. So just want to make sure, as we're looking at.
All of those things in particular.
But wait a minute, I'm not, hold on, hold on, I'm not finished, I'm not finished, not finished. The money comes in through the county and the lodging tax and then we split our lodging tax with these components. And that's important, I'm talking to the people watching now, the taxpayers. Duke Energy gets half, gets a portion and so does the city. But then we pay for Sharonville, which we, we still have a debt on. We want Sharonville Convention Center to be successful. And we do pay now on the Millennium Hotel debt, which right now is just empty. And we got to decide what to put on it. And I'm saying, put something on there to make money versus something on there that will not make money. Because I think Millennium, even though I don't like the Millennium Hotel in terms of how it was, they were up to date on their taxes, their property taxes, and they were paying hotel tax. So we don't have that now. That's, that's gone away. That won't be coming in. So we need something to replace that in a financial way. So I want to put that out there. The other thing that you have on here, you said that Frost, Brown and Todd, and you also named Moody. Who's doing those contracts? Is that contracts with you or?
Yes.
Okay. And that's nothing with the city or the county? Okay. Okay. And then they're going to come back and make a recommendation and then you'll make a recommendation to us. I guess I want to know, how much flexibility do we have, Mr. Administrator? Because we got to vote on it at the end. Y'all know me, I'm not a rubber stamp. So how much flexibility will we have to have input? I don't want anybody to get upset about it, but we got some input that we might hear from people and we want to make sure that input is at the table. We're just not the final yes vote. What input do we have about what we want to see?
Yeah, so, so from my perspective, I think that this board has input during this whole entire process. So, you know, I think as Mr. Leaper had said earlier on, as they are, as Moody Nolan, the architects are in, they're talking with different stakeholders about different things that we want to see, that we want to know if there's any stakeholders at the board, I would like to engage with that, if there's any policy priorities the board would like to see as we, as we get into this. I mean, ultimately, what's going to come back are recommendations to both the county and the city as to how we want to move forward. And we can then decide jointly with the city or depending upon what the project is, if it involves one of us or the other, how we'd like to move forward. So I would say there'd be a tremendous amount of input moving forward.
Well, as part of the input I'm putting in there now, these are the things that I'm, I'm hoping somebody's writing them down and we'll be happy to get them to you. But these are some things. One is, I'd like to see the study. I'd like to know how many hotels online currently and will be online, so we know what the competitive mark is. I also would like, there's another idea that's on the table that I'd like to be looked at and maybe, Mr. Leaper, if you look at it and see the experts, and maybe it is and maybe it's not. But it's no secret, I'm very interested in sports tourism. I think it's an area we're missing out on. We pay for these professional facilities, but there's a lot of money in the amateur sports. This is where mom and grandma and grandpa and daddy, they're with these little minivans and they booking every week with tournaments and so forth and they're running to other locations besides us. We're missing out. And so it was brought to my attention by someone that is in this business too, Miamisburg's doing it, about looking at, do we look at Hard Rock Casino, who's building a hotel, who has experience with convention hotels and so forth? Do we look at seeing what they have, because I know they want to do a hotel, to see what they have, is it something that will allow us on a convention side? And then do we look at Convention Center location for a amateur sports facility that would be making money every single weekend? I just want to put that on the table, not ask for answers, but I like it to at least be looked at, investigated, potentially.
There's nothing that, that keeps your facility, the convention center facility, from accommodating those. My son played AAU basketball. We would go travel around exactly what you just said and they would pack these places in and he would be part of it. But you, you can, you can accommodate that floor and it can be volleyball, it could be, how would accommodate these multipurpose, these courts? Nothing stops us from doing it and we should just make sure that anything we're doing in this renovation would not only not stop it from doing it, but would actually encourage it from, from happening. So you don't want to make your facility, any facility, for one specific thing. You want it to be able to accommodate multiple things and multiple events, whether it's public shows, whether it's amateur sports, whether it's any of those things. But every convention center, every exhibit hall should be able to accommodate what you just said. It should, there's no reason why it shouldn't.
Yeah. I think I'm going to be talking about something different. I think we're talking about sports tourism. I'm, I'm huge in sports, so I really know this. Spooky Nuke is opening up a whole facility that's going to be having nothing but sports. So I do think it is. I think that's the, of today. The old way used to be Convention Center, because they may have a convention in town that day. So I, I do want to explore that more. But the last thing I would ask, Madam President, if we could have, we talked a lot about Duke Energy Center, I just thought it'd be good to have the folks that do Duke Energy Center maybe come in and at least hear from them directly. They run the center, Rick Booth seems to do a pretty good job. The company that owns it, they have, you know, I don't know if it's still Spectra, but Spectra used to, I mean, they owned a bunch of stadiums, they could build that stuff themselves really back in the day.
They don't own it, the city owns it, they just run it.
No, Convention, I'm not talking about Convention Center, I'm talking about the other facilities they have in other cities around the country, the, their company, the parent company. But I'd like to have Mr. Booth in and at least find out what we're doing and even have Sharonville come in and talk about what they're doing and maybe they have some needs as well. But I do want to hear from them, because one of the things I want to find out while we're going through this process, is how do we get more use out of public facilities that we got right now? What is it that we can be getting out of Duke Energy right now while we're waiting to do more expanding and all that? I just believe that there's more that we can get. I've talked about that with, we saw that with Paul Brown Stadium this weekend, Garth Brooks coming in and just packing that place out. I mean, if we could have people like him come in once a month would be unbelievable. More money that we're bringing in. So I would like to hear from Mr. Booth at some point. And even Sharonville Convention Center, they're doing some cool things. To see what they're doing, is it something we're missing or maybe they are doing? And are there some things that could be done right now that may not cost us as much while we're going through this larger process that Mr. Leaper is leading? That's all that I have for today.
We certainly can invite those reps in, no problem. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Just to follow up on that, I recently attended my niece's volleyball tournament at a convention center. So I know they're doing volleyball. I don't know about anything else, but it was.
Down there.
Yeah.
It was a good weekend too, yeah.
It was packed and they had, I mean, they had 50 courts. It was unbelievable. And then people went out of the facility and they went to the restaurants nearby. We did, we went to one of the, so there was a lot of activity down there generated by the youth volleyball and she's in seventh or eighth grade, something like that. So they're doing some of it. I don't know if they're doing other sports, but just to, just to let you know, so Rick will be able to talk about that and how often those folks are down there. I have a couple of questions. One is, we've talked a lot about the lodging tax and the, how high it is. I don't have a good understanding of how we compare and I'd like to get a better understanding of that. Because when I was part of the CVB, there was some conversation with the hoteliers about if we were to talk about the expansion of the convention center, which is something they're all very interested in because it generates room nights for them, you know, would there be a willingness to go any higher than where we are? And so I, I need to better understand, where are we? And how does it compare to other competitive sites?
I owe that, the mayor asked that same question and we'll do some research and get back to you on.
Okay.
Let's try to identify sort of the comparative cities in both Ohio and then, you know, in the surrounding areas and we'll get you a pretty good set.
Yeah, and, and, you know, if the hoteliers are saying, do that, which I think is very curious, by the way, it makes me wonder. So if you could provide that to all of us.
Yeah, well, you know, take, give us a couple of weeks and we'll get it.
Yeah, that's great. My other questions are actually about the renovation, $100 million. So you talked about the inside and outside of the building. I agree there, there is no entrance really to the convention center. It's like, we're, you know, you walk around wondering where, how to get in. And so I agree that the facade needs some attention and it needs to be more welcoming and obvious, I guess, as this is where you come in and welcome.
Needs some outdoor space. I mean, every convention center has, you can go out there and you can have receptions and things that, from, from the building outdoor. There's the space we could do outdoor on the Millennium, but to be able to access decks and patios that is common in almost every other facility.
Yeah. And that's, and just as an aside, that is how I view that, the Millennium site in the interim is green space that can be programmed as if it is an extension of the convention center. So we do generate revenue from it because we program it and it's not just green space, it's, it's programmed green space that we use as if it's part of the convention center facility. So the other thing, and as you go in, as you say, it's, it's not very welcoming just to come upon a bunch of escalators. There's very little retail in there, there's very little anything in there when you walk in. And so there, obviously, there's room for improvement there. But we also have learned, I think through COVID, that not only does that need to happen, but broadband needs to be something that we think about as we renovate any building, including the convention center, because, you know, these conventions have changed and there's a lot of virtual stuff going on at conventions. And so I hope that's part of the plan too, to look at the wifi and the broadband and make sure that that building is able to accept what is necessary for a convention that in, you know, 10 years from now might look very different than what I think we're used to, right, when we go to conventions. That was, that was the most of it. Again, you know, there's so much potential with this. We know this is a big need. The city is our partner in this, but I, I hope that we look at this with a fresh set of eyes to say, we've got what we've got, 100 million is a lot to spend on renovations, but there is so much opportunity in that building. And I think we all agree, especially on that first floor and at the entrance. One other thing, Madam President, with your indulgence, I'm just going to mention because we're talking about convention center and convention center district. I don't know if anybody else has met with the group that is talking about the, what we call the kind of the spaghetti highway to the west of the convention center and any opportunity that might exist to streamline some of that highway system to accommodate more land to the west of the convention center. And so there, there was some talk about many acres. I don't know if that's realistic or not, I just, I don't know enough about it. But I, I did put a call into Tammy Campbell, the deputy director of ODOT for our district, District Eight, and, you know, said to her, and she promised to look at it, if there is an opportunity to streamline any of the highway system to the west as we look towards Brent Spence and redoing all of that highway leading up to the bridge, without delaying any of the work on the bridge, without jeopardizing any of the funding that we hope we get from the federal government. But as they're doing this design build, if there's any way to get additional land, maybe an acre or two even, to the west, that might give us some flexibility when we talk about the expansion of the exhibit space, because we've always talked about going east because we're landlocked. But if that highway system were to be more streamlined without, you know, getting rid of any of the access points, you know, maybe that's something we should be looking at. And so she is, was somewhat familiar with this plan, but not overly familiar. But as, you know, they've already, they've got the plan, but they're always redesigning, always redesigning. So I just want to put that out there that there may be some opportunity to the west, not, not a ton perhaps, but if the Millennium site's only like an acre and a half, and that's significant, then an acre and a half on the other side would be of equal significance. Yeah, so just want to throw that out there.
The chamber is, apparently the chamber is organizing a discussion around this and they asked us to participate. So I, I hear what you say and I, we got to keep, if there's surplus land there, we should do our best to get it.
Yeah, okay. All right, great. Thank you. Appreciate the updates.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having me.
Okay, we will move right along to tuition reimbursement and county workforce plan. Frank Spataro.
Madam President.
Yes.
If I could, just briefly, as Frank is coming up on this particular topic, just to introduce it, just for those watching at home, the county is, the board has been fierce advocates of this as well, is constantly looking to try to position the county as being an employer of choice, in choice, making it one of the places that when people in Hamilton County and the community are thinking about, "Where do I want to work?", they're thinking about Hamilton County as a top employer. The board has done a lot of things in the recent past to try to promote that. We've done everything in terms of working to address our competitive wage situation. We've raised the minimum level of pay. We strive for equity across the board in terms of all of our wages. We have an attractive benefit package. We have a paid parental leave program. We offer a robust professional development training. We are working on, working on a program to address parking for county employees. But more to the point for today, I'd ask Frank to brief the board on something that was included in the 2022 budget, and that is the reinstitution of a program that had been mothballed back right when economic hardship started back in the, it must have been back in 2009 or so, Frank. I can't remember how long ago it's been.
Maybe 2007-ish.
Seven, even earlier. So the county's tuition reimbursement program, which is obviously a program that, as people are looking to come to a place to work, they want to know what opportunities are there so that they can continue to develop themselves professionally. At one point in time, we did have a tuition reimbursement program. The policy still exists on the books, and so we had talked about dusting that off and reinstituting it, reinstituting it this year. So I asked Frank to come today and provide a board, the board with an update on that and some other things that speak to that issue. So, oh, I should also mention that this was, as the board is aware, also have an employee advisory committee that we pulled together that Frank and his staff are instrumental in helping us with, to just continually get feedback from the workforce. And when we asked them about what are some of the things that they would like to see at the county, reinstitution of tuition reimbursement was one of the top things on their list. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Spataro.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We're really excited about bringing this program back for a lot of reasons Jeff mentioned. It's been mentioned prominently by the employee advisory committee, and it's a great opportunity to reskill and upskill the workforce. The policy that you've been provided is basically the same as the existing policy or the policy that was in place. We made just a few adjustments. One is that we have, we've eliminated the PhD and postgraduate work for the purpose of freeing up additional money for people that are maybe working on an undergraduate or graduate degree. But we're still indexed, our reimbursement rate is indexed to the University of Cincinnati, either their undergraduate or graduate rate. We have a maximum, the maximum hours still remains at seven per semester or quarter. And there's a limit of up to $5,250 per year to stay under the federal tax limit, so that they're not paying taxes on that, on whatever they get reimbursed. This is a countywide program, so it extends not only to employees under the board, but to the entire county employee population of about 4,300 people. I looked at the last three years that the program was in place, and the expense, expenses averaged about $100,000 a year. I can't tell you how many participants we had each of those years. Right now, I can get that number if you're interested and report back to you, but that equals about what was budgeted for 2022. We'd like to get the program up and running for the summer and fall semesters for this year. I think that'll be a good barometer as to kind of gauge the interest for 2023, and really looking forward to this. In addition to the tuition reimbursement program, on Thursday, we have a resolution that will come before you for adoption, where we have joined with the University of Cincinnati in a 10% tuition discount program for their online programs. It's the same program that the City of Cincinnati adopted earlier this year, and I think that having those two programs at work is going to provide a lot of opportunity for employees that are interested in improving their skills for their current job or for promotion to lessen the burden on them, and we can help out with our reimbursement policy. Any questions?
Yeah, I don't know if you sent this to us in advance, did you?
The policy itself went out in a memo and an email to the board, I'm sorry.
The revisions, the changes that were made. So did this go out earlier?
The version that you have here went out earlier, yes.
When?
It was maybe a week or so ago, I believe, or late, maybe late last week.
There's a couple of changes that might have occurred. I think that we had, we might have had a higher number of hours, but we dialed that back to seven hours. I think it was maybe 12, and it was dialed back into seven, because we're not sure what kind of.
I understand the rationale of the changes, but my question was, the final changes, did we, when did we get that?
Well, I.
I believe that was late, would have been sometime, can't remember the exact day. It was sometime last week, though, I believe, when that went out. And that was inclusive of the changes that you see here before you.
Okay. Were you getting ready to say something? Oh, okay. But I was just wanted to, no, I was asking Leslie, but I'm looking at D, Frank, and courses and expenses that do not qualify, and I'm sure there's some rationale for it. I won't get in there specifically, because I think this is an awesome program. As you were saying, we haven't done it in many, many years. This is great, a great incentive to keep our staff here, to retain them, and also to hire those that come in. So I just want to start out with saying this is great. I know the first bullet point, certification of accreditation courses are not included. I know Jeff had mentioned that we're going to look at that in another bucket, so that's great. So what I'm going to do is just, for instance, I go all the way down to maybe the seventh bullet. It says standardized tests to earn college credit by exam is not included. I'm not going to ask you now to the rationale, but a couple bullets I have questions about, and I'll send it to you.
That's fine.
If you could just let me know where we got that from. But the bottom line is, I think it's great that we're doing it, we're getting off the ball, and getting it started. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice President Reese.
Thank you. This is just the tuition program. This is not the internship or the other programs.
That's correct. Yeah, we'll be back on with that.
Yeah, I just had something on the bullet, too, and maybe, like you said, you're HR expert, so there may be rationale behind it. But when you look at textbooks, I mean, those are things, supplies, those kind of drive your costs up in college. You know, so just, you know, I understand, you know, education involving sports, games, or hobbies, we understand that. But when you start talking about textbooks, it's like, okay, we're trying to cut the costs down. Certification, I would, I agree with President Dumas on that, because we want people to be certified and accredited, I guess. We want them taking accreditation courses. I don't want them taking courses that are not accredited, I guess. So, but maybe, like you said, you have more expert, you can, expertise, and you can explain that. The other thing I just, I think it's great, we've got the partnership with the University of Cincinnati, and it's great that us along with the city is doing that. But I would like to see us take a step a little further and see if, and you may have this already, but I'll just put it out there for future, you know, Sisai State, I'd like to see Central State. I know we talked about having a better partnership. Procter &amp; Gamble, which is right down the street from us, had the president of Central State in, and they did a big recruitment that they're trying to do of students and partnerships. So, you know, that may be a partnership, there are some areas that they offer degrees in. I don't know if it's the city, but I know the Sisai Police Department, they have a partnership with Central State. I think if you're a police officer, they recognize something, and you get either a discount or some credits. I'm not sure exactly what it is, but they have a partnership with the Sisai Police Department, and I know some officers that are going through that program. So maybe it's an opportunity to expand what we already have. But I do, first of all, let me just step back before we get into the particulars and say, to offer tuition reimbursement at a time when student loan debt is killing people, at a time when people come out and they're in so much debt that they work, 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 and can't get out, can't get that student loan debt off their back. And I'm a big proponent of trying to forgive the student loan debt, but if you got tuition reimbursement, you don't have the debt in the first place. So I think that that's a major thing that we are offering, to have tuition reimbursement as a board. I think it's a big step, allows people to get their education, but don't have to worry about having all that extra debt on their back. So I want to thank you and commend the administration, and also thank our board for saying this is very important. There's a few little tweaks, but we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, I just want to add, I sign off on a lot of public, on public loan forgiveness programs. We have quite a few employees that are having portions of their student loans forgiven by the federal government through their service with the county. So our role is to verify their employment, and I approve, or I sign off on quite a few of those over the course of the year.
Good. Keep signing.
Keep signing.
That's great. That's good to hear, yeah. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, Frank, for bringing this to us. I, too, am a big, big fan of this program, and as Jeff said at the very beginning of the conversation, you know, we have taken an attitude on this board where we want to attract and retain the best quality employees that we possibly can. And so we have done things like $15 an hour guaranteed wages for county employees, we've done the parental leave policy, we've done some significant progress with training of our employees to help them with their professional, you know, accreditations. So this, to me, is part of a package where we are taking very seriously our investment in our employees. And so the tuition reimbursement, I think especially for, I don't know, I would think especially for younger people, although people of my age still do go back to school, maybe not quite as many of us. But I think, you know, this is something that especially the younger folks would be especially interested in, and so I'm very excited about us offering this and promoting it to our workforce and beyond, to let people know that we're open for business here at the county, and we want to invest in our employees and really welcome people into the fold. So a couple of things that I just wanted to touch on, and I read through it while others were asking questions. So it is a true reimbursement, where the employee puts the money out first, and then that amount of money is reimbursed within 90 days. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make that clear. And then, because it is an investment, if there is something in here about the expectation of that employee and them staying with the county for a certain period of time.
Yes.
After they've received the benefit.
Two years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to clarify that.
And there's also a repayment agreement included in the event that they don't stay with us. So we would try to recoup a certain portion of what we have paid out in reimbursement.
Okay. Yeah, and that's at the end if they were to leave. Yeah, okay. All right, very good. Well, thank you. Thanks so much for bringing this forward. It's, I just think it's a fantastic program.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and it goes in all different areas, all different departments. I wanted, Leslie, did you want to say something?
I was just telling Commissioner Dumas that I just received the tuition.
Put it, Michael.
I received the tuition reimbursement this morning to add it to the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, I thought you were saying, I didn't, I thought you were saying that you received tuition reimbursement. Okay, I said, well, that's great. She's doing her role as a clerk.
I was thinking, how did she get it before we reinstituted the policy?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I'm sorry, Leslie, and everybody, so. But thank you so much, but I just wanted to make a, just ask a quick question, not composition, but how many are actually in the employee advisory group?
There's about 20, maybe somewhere around 20, representing virtually every department under the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
And we meet monthly.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Madam President.
Yes.
Can I just ask, as we're, we're dealing with tuition reimbursement, we're dealing with incentives, and what do you call, as Commissioner Dreehouse said, a package that you get? So people would say, "I want to work there," because they got a good package, they got good benefits, they've got good tuition reimbursement, they've got a lot of different things that we're putting on the table. Besides, people don't want just a salary, no more. They want a way of life and know that you care about them. So what you're putting together is great. Madam President, I just wanted to highlight, I know you said, Leslie, I thought she was going to say this, but one of the ideas, I just want to say that these ideas are coming from the employees, and I think that's important, to let them know that we are listening, not to say that we're doing every single thing, but we're doing the best we can. We are listening, we're making changes where we can, as quick as we can, for them. And one of the things that we always talk about is childcare. And Leslie was saying, I know with the group, she had mentioned about, man, wouldn't it be great to have a childcare center right, you know, in our building or one of these buildings that we own that the, that the employees can use? We've seen that in, at the State House, in the Vern Rife, and just want to let you know that that was passed on to Administrator Aludo, and he mentioned that that was one of the top issues as well. I believe Commissioner Dreehouse also heard it and passed it on as well, and I know President Dumas, you have been talking about the childcare as well. That would be huge for us, and I know Administrator Aludo, I guess, is beginning to possibly work on it, so I didn't know if he wanted to say a word about that or not. But I think that that's a positive thing, and it came out of the employees, like you said.
Yeah, Madam President, and Madam Vice President, no real update along at this point. HR Director Spataro and I have talked about this, so as you said, Vice President Reese's was also something that came up in the context of employee advisory committee meetings as well. So we're starting to look into it, and it's a little bit bigger issue than tuition reimbursement, but nonetheless, not something that other organizations aren't doing. So it's certainly within the realm of the feasible. So we'll, we'll take a look at it and try to get you a report back on it within the next couple of months.
Thank you so much.
Very good.
And thank you for your work. I'd like to put this on our legislative meeting for the following Thursday. Are we able to do that? Are we capable?
We could do it by leave this Thursday, if you'd like.
Okay, that would be great. That would be great. I didn't want to.
Very good. I do have a resolution writing it out, so.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, we'll move forward. Item number three is a resolution reappointing John Goldy as a member of the Hamilton County Storm Drainage Variants and Appeals Board for term expiring November the 2nd, 2026. So that was our resolution. I didn't actually make a motion, so I make a motion to, well, let's see if there's any discussion. No? Like, make a motion to reappoint Mr. John Goldy.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Very good. With no further.
Madam President, can I just, I just got one quick thing, because we had a lot of great information today, and as we indicated, this proposed hotel convention construction could be one of the, you know, biggest new type of constructions that we'll have for the next 20, 30 years. I just wanted to recap for the administrator, if he could get to us, maybe within his report that he gives to us on a weekly basis, but I think we, one of the things is I wanted to make sure that our contract states that the hotel is a top priority. I don't want us to get too mixed up with the other components, and the hotel is kind of put to the side. That is the one that we have a deadline, but also those items that we had asked for, you know, knowing what all the hotels, things that are coming up, and looking at those things that we had asked, if we could get that in a report along with the contract that would help us, as he puts his reports together that he gets to all of us, it'd help us stay on track and understand what's going on. Thank you.
And also the two reps that were talked about for Duke Energy Center and Sharonville Center, if we can get them to come in, that would be great.
Madam President, if I could, just very briefly, the additions of Mr. Booth to a future agenda, as well as the other questions, I think I got most of them, but the video is recorded, so we'll go back and take a look, make sure we've got all of them, and get back to the board on the questions that were asked during Mr. Leeper's presentation.
Thank you so much. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.